I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, roll call please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Gorley. Counselor Gerson. Counselor Trask.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Present.
The record show we have six present with one absent. Counselor Gorley is having a personal matter this evening to attend to. So at this time, I ask for approval for absence.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Close. The record show we have six ayes, no nays, approval of Counselor Gorley's absence. Under consent agenda, we have a request for council action committee appointments. I'm going to be moving that down to new business. So at this time, I'm just asking for approval only of the consent agenda minutes.
Mayor, there are no minutes in this packet.
Was it one of the previous?
No.
Okay, I stand corrected. Okay, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Anybody who would like to come forth, be heard before city council. Do we have any on? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if we could maybe read those instructions again before we move forward.
Meeting information.
Yeah, participation.
The ones on the front of this, the one I read earlier or the one here?
The one that we read earlier, the same one, yeah.
I will go ahead and read the meeting instructions of online participation in public meetings. Thank you for everyone who is joining us this evening. For members of the public who would like to take part in tonight's meeting virtually, we have some instruction to help in case you are new to using Microsoft Teams. To take part, you will need to locate the chat bubble icon to participate in the meeting online. The chat bubble icon, indicated with a yellow arrow on your screen now, may be in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, or you may need to click on these three dots to see an extended drop-down menu. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak during the meeting, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. In the chat, enter your name, address, phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss with the council. If you have signed in, you will may be called on to speak at any point during the meeting, but probably during the agenda item you have entered to speak about. You can choose the hand icon also located in the upper right-hand corner to indicate you desire to speak. It is equivalent to raising your hand. The mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone who may wish to speak tonight a few minutes right now to enter the name, address, phone number, and topic they would like to address with the city council. In the interest of time, speakers should not repeat the points of a previous speaker. Instead, you should agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or the meeting chairperson per council rules. Those joining by phone will be noted by moderator for the, or the mayor and chairperson, and will be called upon at an appropriate time. The fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior, and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in council rules. So since we have not had any recognition of visitors and hearing petitions that I'm aware of, we'll move on to new business, where we had a request for council action committee appointments, and we were going to go ahead and do them by individually. At this time, we will go ahead and do them by individual.
Oh, sorry. Wait, okay. So if you look at your packet, you have a request for council action on page three. So since we've moved this, the recommendations still stand as made by the admin finance committee who conducted the interviews. They have suggested the four appointments that appeared before you. So, or excuse me, three appointments before, no, there's four because there's also a library. Four total. And so at this point in time with the mayor moving them to address individually, essentially what you have is four separate motions that need to be made if you choose to fill all four of the openings. So one of those openings is for the library board. Perhaps that would be the best place to start.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. The record show we have six ayes, no nays, with one absent, approval of Jamie Frick to be appointed to the library advisory board. Next is Eva Journey.
So Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to reappoint Eva Journey to the planning commission?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to reappoint Eva Journey to the planning commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The record show we have six ayes, no nays, with one approval of Eva Journey to the planning commission to reappoint. Next up, James Goble.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to appoint James Goble to the planning commission?
I have a motion and a second to appoint James Goble to the planning commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The record show we have five ayes, with one nay, and one absent to approval of Jamie Goble to the planning commission. Next up, Jamie Melcher.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to appoint Jamie Melcher to the planning commission for a four-year term?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record show I have six ayes, with no nays, and one absent, approval of Jamie Melcher to the planning commission. Now moving on to request for council action, resolution number three for 2021 fee schedule.
You have annually, this is on page 25 of your packet, every year we review all of our fees to look for fees that are out of line for whatever cause, purpose, whether costs change, times change, requirements change, laws change, all kinds of things. So this year you have in front of you a list of a couple of changes that staff is proposing that you would adopt in the change to the fee schedule for the upcoming year. We, you have both the RCA which explains the changes, you have the strike through with the red, and then you have a clean version following that. If you have any questions, staff would be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions of city councils? The council director.
So Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution number three for 2021, the fee schedule?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The record show I have six ayes, with no nays, and one absent, approval of the fee schedule. Resolution number three for 2021.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, counsel.
Ray, is this, this fee schedule to be adopted like this is now January, in January every year?
We have, so since we've gone to this methodology, we have tried to adopt it in January of every year. I think we've only done that once. Every other time, I think for the last two out of the three years, it's been the first meeting in February.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to ordinance bill's request for council action, first reading. Need the council directors if they want this to go forth for first reading.
Mr. Mayor, this is first reading?
Correct.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the amended SDC ordinance as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to push it forward for first reading tonight. All in favor say aye.
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 Close. The record show six ayes, no nays, and one absent, approval to move this forward to first reading. Move forward to first reading, Mr. Mayor.
Ordinance bill, no. Two for 2021. Ordinance, no. Underscore, 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 underscore. Sweet Home ordinance pertaining to system development charges. Whereas, the city of Sweet Home has undertaken a complete review of its system development charges in order to ensure its compliance with state law, and whereas, it is important to the city that costs of growth are equitably and rationally shared by new growth and development activities. Now therefore, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, the title of Sweet Home Municipal Code Chapter 13.12 titled Water and Sewer Hookup Fees and System Development Charges is changed to read System Development Charges. Section two, Sweet Home Municipal Code 13.12.010 purpose is amended to read as follows. The purpose of the system development charge is to impose a portion of the cost of capital improvements for water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, and parks upon those development, s, that create the need for or increase the demands on capital improvements, consistent with state law. Section three, Sweet Home Municipal Code 13.12.020 definitions for the following defined words shall be amended to read as follows. Capital improvements. Public facilities or assets used for the following. One, water supply, treatment, and distribution. Two, wastewater collection, transmission, treatment, and disposal. Three, drainage and flood control. Four, transportation. Or five, parks and recreation. Permittee. The person to whom a building permit, development permit, a permit or plan approval to connect to the sanitary sewer, stormwater, or water system, or right-of-way access permit is issued. System development charge. A reimbursement fee, an improvement fee, or a combination thereof assessed or collected at the time of increased usage of a capital improvement or issuance of a development permit or building permit, or connection to the capital improvement. One, a system development charge includes that portion of a sanitary sewer, storm sewer, or water system connection charge that is greater than the amount necessary to reimburse the city for its average cost of inspecting and installing connections with water, wastewater, and slash or stormwater facilities. Two, a system development charge does not include fees assessed or collected as part of a local improvement district or a charge in lieu of a local improvement district assessment or the cost of complying with requirements or conditions imposed by a land use decision. Section four, Sweet Home Municipal Code 13.12.030 system development charge established is amended to include the following subsection, see. See systems development charges for each system may be automatically adjusted on the first day of July of each calendar year. The city recorder shall make the adjustment based upon the Seattle Construction Cost Index published by Engineering News Record, E N R, by calculating the percentage increase slash decrease in the index for the period since the last adjustment, and then applying that percentage increase slash decrease in the index for the period since the last adjustment, and then applying that percentage to the figures used to calculate the system's development charge and any credits. Section five, Sweet Home Municipal Code 13.12.040 methodology is amended to read as follows. A, the methodology used to establish or modify the reimbursement fee shall promote the objective that future systems users shall contribute no more than an equitable share of the cost of then existing facilities. The methodology used to establish or modify reimbursement fee shall, where applicable, be based on: one, rate-making principles employed to finance publicly-owned capital improvements; two, prior contributions be existing users; three, gifts or grants from federal or state government or private persons; four, the value of unused capacity available to future system users or the cost of the existing facilities; and five, other relevant factors identified by the city council. B, the methodology used to establish or modify an improvement fee shall demonstrate consideration of the estimated cost of projected capital improvements identified in an improvement plan, see 13.12.070 of this chapter, that are needed to increase the capacity of the systems to which the fee is related. The methodology shall be calculated to obtain the cost of capital improvements for the projected need for system capacity for future system users. See, the methodology used to establish or modify the improvement fee or the reimbursement fee, or both, shall be contained in a resolution adopted by the city council. D, a change in the amount of a reimbursement fee or an improvement fee is not a modification of the system development charge if the change in amount is based on: one, a change in project costs, including the cost of materials, labor, or real property, or; two, the periodic application of one or more specific cost indexes or other periodic data sources, including the cost index identified in 13.12.030, see, of this chapter. A specific cost index or periodic data source must be: a relevant measurement of the average change in prices over an identified time period for materials, labor, real property, or a combination of the three. Be published by a recognized organization or agency that produces the index or data source for reasons that are independent of the system development charge methodology, and: C, incorporated as part of the established methodology or identified and adopted by the city council in a separate resolution, or if no other index is identified in the established methodology, then the index stated in 13.12.030, see, of this chapter. Section six, Sweet Home Municipal Code 13.12.070 improvement plan is amended to read as follows. A, prior to the establishment of a system development charge, the council shall adopt a plan that includes a list of: one, the capital improvements that the city council intends to fund in whole or in part with improvement fee revenues; two, the estimated cost and time of construction of each improvement and the percentage of that cost eligible to be funded with improvement fee revenues. B, in adopting this plan, the city council may incorporate by reference all or a portion of any public facilities plan, master plan, capital improvements plan, or similar plan that contains the information required by the section. C, the council may modify the plan and list at any time. If a system development charge will be increased by a proposed modification to the list to include a capacity increasing public improvement, the city council will, one, at least 30 days prior to adoption of the proposed modification, provide written notice to persons who have requested notice pursuant to 13.12.120 of this chapter, and: two, hold a public hearing if a written request for a hearing is received within seven days of the date of the proposed modification. Section seven, Sweet Home Municipal Code 13.12.100 exemptions is amended to read as follows. The following are exempt from system development charges. A, additions to single-family dwellings that do not constitute the addition of a dwelling unit, as defined by the state's Uniform Building Code. B, an alteration, addition, replacement, or change in use that does not increase the parcels or structures use of the public improvement facility. C, municipal projects or any other development which is being financed by city funds. D, housing for low-income or elderly persons which is exempt from real property taxes under state law. Section eight, Sweet Home Municipal Code 13.12.110 credits, subsections E, F, G, and H are amended, and subsection I is added to read as follows. E, notwithstanding subsections A through D above, the city may provide for a credit against the improvement fee, the reimbursement fee, or both, for capital improvements constructed as part of the development which reduce the development's demand upon existing capital improvements and slash or the need for future capital improvements, or a credit based upon any other rationale the council finds reasonable. F, notwithstanding subsections A through D above, the city may provide a credit against the improvement fee, the reimbursement fee, or both, for the dedication of land to the city, not including public rights-of-way, for the future expansion of the city's water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, or park systems. However, this credit shall only be applied toward the system, water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, or parks, for which the land is dedicated. G, credits shall not be transferable from one development to another. H, credits shall not be transferable from type of system development charge to another. I, credits shall be used within 10 years from the date the credit is given. Section nine, Sweet Home Municipal Code 13.12.170 prohibited connection is amended to read as follows. No person may connect to the water, wastewater, stormwater, or transportation systems of the city unless the appropriate system development charge has been paid or the lean or installment payment method has been applied for and approved.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add a couple of, obviously that should be passed 2021 at the end. And also, section five, A, two, prior contributions by existing users not be existing users. And thank you, Counselor Coleman, for pointing that out.
There's another typo in section eight. H should be, credits shall not be transferable from one type of system development charge to another.
Corrections noted. Any questions of council? I need the council directors if they want to move this forward to the second reading.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion, second, move to second reading. Any who say aye?
Aye.
Close. The record show I have six ayes, no nays, and one absent, approval to move forward to second reading on February 23rd, title only. At this time, we have a second reading of ordinance bill number one for 2021, zone map amendment.
By title only? Yeah. Ordinance bill number one for 2021, ordinance number blank, and ordinance amending the official zoning map.
Questions of councilors? The council director.
Mr. Mayor, is this to move to the third reading? Oh, so moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The record show I have six ayes, no nays, and one absent, to move to the third and final reading on February 23rd, title only. At this time, we do not have any third readings. Moving on to reports of committees. Anybody who would like to bring anything up to be reported on? I do know there's admin finance meetings. Any questions regarding that?
Do you want me to respond to that?
If you want to, anyone who want to add to it. Okay. Reports of city officials, manager report. I just want to personally thank city manager Ray Towery for just, did an excellent job in our council training. Also want to thank all of the city staff for their time and all their efforts. And I thought everybody did an awesome job, especially Julie. I think she did an excellent job. Thank you for all that great meals and putting all the guineese preparation. So I just want to say thank you to everybody. It was, I thought it was a good, informative weekend, and I hope all councilors got something out of it and they learned something from it. So, thank you again. City manager's report.
You stole my thunder, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank you all and point out that you spent approximately 18 hours over the three days, essentially volunteering and giving up your entire weekend, including a piece of Super Bowl Sunday in an effort to become a better counselor and public servant. And for that, I would like to thank you. It was a lot of time. And I personally and the staff appreciate that, and the citizens of the community hopefully do as well. With that being said, we are going to put out a little doodle poll for you and ask for your input on ways that we can make it better next year. So we'll be asking, you know, what did you like, what didn't you like? What information did you get, what didn't you get that you would like? Obviously, to keep the time down, if you're going to ask us to add information, there's got to be something that comes out as well. Unless we all want to spend more time next year there, which I'm going to guess is a hard no from everybody. Item of note for you is we did go through an exercise where we asked you each to write the three things, the big things that you got out of it. Of all of those items, only really one of you had one item that matched another. The rest of them were varying all over the board on what you really got out of it, which is good. But I thought that was interesting note. And we will have your goals ready for your adoption at the next meeting. And I really need to reiterate thanks to the staff for this weekend. Again, all the staff that was there, except, well, for the most part, they don't get anything extra. Your department heads don't get anything extra for spending that extra time. They're exempt. They did it because it was for the best in our community and for us as an organization. And so I really want to thank them as well. And Julie and LaGia did an excellent job helping keep everything running smoothly. We did, for your note, we spread out the wealth on the meals. I think we hit four different restaurants or food service organizations throughout the weekend, or five? Four. So we did try and spread the wealth out to different restaurants and give everybody a piece of the pie, for lack of a better term. So with that, staff's a little frazzled. We're all a little bit of overloaded, and we are all certainly trying to play catch-up. And we appreciate your patience as we do that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just also, if I could point out real quick, the sweetheart run is this weekend on Saturday. Any of you that like to volunteer, I'm sure the Rotary would love the help. And the library services director position will be posted soon. We will be asking two counselors to sit in on those interviews as we map everything out. Again, we'll probably leave that out and open for a good three to four weeks so we can get the maximum applicants in the applicant pool. And then we'll set some dates and times in that timeframe for first round and potentially second rounds of interviews. And how are we going to do that in a COVID world, depending on what restrictions we're under at that time? So we'll have to play it by ear potentially up until a couple of days before. So we'll do the best we can.
All good, thank you. Department directors' reports. Any questions of our department directors?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question of the city manager. So Ray, we, Lynn County's been moved out of extreme risk into high risk? What does that mean?
My understanding is some of the businesses will be allowed to reopen different categories at varying levels, for the most part. I'm not offhand exactly certain of what those are for each one, but we can certainly clarify all of that.
Is Greg still online, Brandon? So I have a question.
Greg, there's a question with California.
So Greg, heard about the water treatment plant in Florida being hacked? Its system being hacked, did you hear about that? Uh-oh, I can't hear you.
Greg, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yeah, you guys are really messing with me. I had all this amazing stuff to say, and I can't redo it.
Sorry.
I know, I did read a small article I saw this morning. It didn't have a lot of detail. And what they're referring to is, you know, we kind of bounced around that term SCADA when we had our training. And we talked about individual components throughout the treatment plants that control chemicals, they control the pump speeds, they control many different things, flow rates. many different things, flow rates, that go to a central computerized system where people can look at that and make adjustments and basically operate that plant from any laptop or computer system. And we actually, Stephen, I see is online, he's kind of expert in this area. But basically, somehow, some way, somebody got in through their system, their SCADA system, and it sounded like they adjusted, I want to say, they called it lie, so I'm not sure, it must have been something for pH or something. And I guess they, it put it into a level of what would be higher than normal doses, and it raised some alarms, but somebody hacked in and did, and did that. So, every system is vulnerable. When we talk about SCADA upgrades, that's what Stephen and I are talking about. Our, we're building a new one at the wastewater plant. We know this is the one at the water plant. It, it's there, it's a, it's a good Siemens product, but it has intermittent issues of how it talks to different things, and it's not a complete unit. It doesn't talk to everything. And so we're going to improve that. But with that, as we upgrade, upgrade softwares, we want to look at our security and, and, and everything we do with that. And one of the companies we're using currently is one of the top companies in Oregon, and nationally they're used everywhere. So they have an office out of Eugene, and they're part of our engineer record group, which we adopted this year, and we're looking forward to fixing some things that way. But it can happen.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Can I have a backseat? Which means I owe you all donuts.
Yeah.
Thank you. We need to set a meeting potentially, and next week, we, we would ask respectfully if we could have that meeting next Tuesday, the 16th, for the capital improvement project list, the CIP, which we discussed at the retreat. We will get that information out to you in the coming day or so, and we need to have, is it the adoption, the work session, correct? Yeah, we have a work session on the 16th.
Why can't we do that Friday, Mr. Mayor?
Have fun. I won't be here. It would be, it would be at your, your discretion. I think staff would probably prefer earlier is better. Certainly.
What work for the councilors? 5:30, 6:00 work?
5:30, 5:00.
I can make 5:30 work.
All in favor of 5:00?
Thank you.
We forgot to excuse Councilor Gorley's absence by motion, did we? Oh, sorry, I was asleep. It was my nap time.
You don't remember saying no? She just wants to play with my mind. She's working at it.
It was a test.
It was a test. No, I don't do that.
She knew what the answer was all along.
Sorry.
I just want a real quick, a quick shout out to Commissioner Stevens. I see he's on tonight. Thank you for attending. Thank you again, Stephen, for everything you do. Anyway, thanks. Any other questions or directors' reports? City attorney? Anything left of council business could have ordered to be discussed? If not, we will go ahead and adjourn at 7:05.
Cut it out.
No, no, yeah.
Oh, I have the, it's over here.
Too many game screens.